Anna Cordamadera Planning Commission. So please join me, or first of all, roll call.
We'll start with over on my right this time, Commissioner Vandell.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rizzo.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
And new Commissioner, Commissioner Kenny.
Here.
It's great. Welcome. All right. Join me in a salute to the flag, please.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and in the Republic or which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I've been reminded that we have to elect officers at this meeting. We have not done so for a year. And it's time to do so. So we have to elect a chair and a vice chair. So take nominations for chair. Make the emotion.
A move Peter Chase for our chair.
Second.
And third.
All right. Thank you.
I'll do that one first. Okay, we'll just do a voice vote on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now we need to have a middle for the vice chair.
A move James Rizzo for vice chair.
Second.
Right.
All in favor on that, whether you'd like it or not.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to have you in vice chair.
You're welcome.
All right. So at this point in every meeting, we open the meeting to a public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. If you want to make a comment, please step up to the microphone. You have three minutes. And we'll time you.
Hi, my name is Patsy McCullough, and I am a resident of Corder Madera, born and raised. I've been living here for 64 years. I also operated as a retailer here with Vale Resorts and the Indian Mountain team, so I have deep roots in both business and in my community, and it's very important to me. I also am Kyle's partner, and we own and operate Zen's Wine Bar up in Corder Madera at the Old Town Square on the corner. And we've been very thankful that the town of Corder Madera has been very supportive of us throughout the pandemic and all of the crazy pivots that we had to go through. The town stepped up and ordered us some space in front of the bar, and we created a beautiful parklet. Some of you have been there, and if you haven't, we encourage you to come up. But it's adored by the community. It has created a space for all of the influx of the San Francisco new people moving into our town to meet and make friends. I can give you a list of 200 people that are new, that are now buddies, and their kids are all playing together. That happened right in the gutters of Corder Madera. So what brings me here today is it turns out that the parklet temporary ordinances are all coming to an end at the end of December. We've had a lot of communication from town officials in the form of in-person, some articles in the IJ quoting both Todd Cusmano, Eli Beckman, and Mayor Fred Casissa saying that they love the outdoor lifestyle. Our community craves it. They really want to do everything they can to make these outdoor areas permanent. And that's what we're very hopeful for. With the ordinance ending at the end of December, we know that the town has some work to make that happen, and we appreciate that you guys are all very busy, men and women. I know there's a study. I don't know everything involved to make this happen. I'm just scrambling to try to figure it out now. But we would urge you to do the work and try to make this happen before the parklet expires, these ordinances. We have had indication that if the parklet expires, then we take it down and, you know, the city then can work and do work, and perhaps someday down the road, they will be permanent. But at that point, we've lost a lot of momentum. And a couple of things, we would lose revenue, we would lose staff, which we provide 15 jobs here in Corder Madera for part-time people that are students. We've got half of our team are going to graduate school. We have people that are retirees that live in the community that work at our shop, as well as we provide a space for fundraisers where we don't charge anything for any of the schools or any of the businesses. Yes, that means that I'm up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Guys, so I think you might recognize me. I don't know. I've been around. I'm the other half of the partner, Zen's Wine Bar. She's been a little more eloquent than I am, but she's hit on some very good points. What the parklet has meant to the community, what we've done, what we've been able to put together. When I bought the bar, I had every intention of just turning into a local place where people could come in and have fun and sit and drink, have good wine. What it's turned into, what it's morphed into is a community gathering spot. It's kind of amazing that I get texts from the mayor and Todd Cusmano and other people about how things are going and how things are happening, and the appreciation that we get from all the customers and the clients, and even people that just drive by and wave. It's pretty incredible. Not only have we built a place for people to just come in and have fun, they gather that they have meetings there. We support different factions around the community. Yes, one of them is the Ross Valley Women's League, but we support Spark. We support the school. The town puts on music during the summer, which is a summer concert series. At the end of that period, which is the weekend before Labor Day, I then fund on our own the next seven weeks of music, just so the community can come in and play during some of the best weather that we have in the entire community. Unfortunately, the way the permit is states, I guess, it ends the end of December, at which point we will probably be required to either tear it down or renegotiate what it looks like. I don't mind renegotiating what it looks like. I already accepted that, and I understood also that there would probably be permit fees that would be in place, which is fine. What we do for the community, that's worth it to me. I don't care. The rewarding part of what we have there is being able to hear the customers and hear the people have fun and engage in life and just talk about things, you know, whether it's the last two years or what they've done with the vacations or whatever. That's the reward. The revenue is great. We have jobs for people that need the jobs or want the jobs and want to work for the community there. But the best part is what we've built for the community. It seems a little counterproductive to tear it down and then rebuild it. I understand the parameters. I understand that you guys are busy with other functions around the city. However, I would ask you to take a look at the way that it should be built. Give me the idea of what you want done, and I can put it together and put it in without having to tear it down. Seems tearing it down, we've got a loss of revenue, a loss of time, and the community will be really very unhappy.
Thank you very much. On a personal note, I don't drink, and it's still fun.
Great.
Anyway, that's great. Thank you very much. So we're going to move on to new hearings for this evening. We have one new hearing, and that new hearing is 645 Tamil Pious Drive. This is a design review application, PL 2021 0043, for a new 2560 square foot, three-unit apartment building and variance application for a rear yard variance and parking variance at 645 Tamil Pious Drive. Martha.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Chase and members of the commission. This evening, you'll be considering a design review and variance application for a three-unit apartment building at 645 Tamil Pious Drive. Project site. The project site is located at 645 Tamil Pious Drive. Located to the west of the project site is the former Daphne Funeral Home. Located to the east of the site is the Bank of America Building. Located north of the site across from Tamil Pious Drive are Single Family Residential. Located directly south of the site is the Lutheran Church, and also located to the southwest is across Meadows Suite, our Single Family Residential. The project site is approximately 20,000 square feet, and it's developed with an existing one-story office building that's approximately 5,500 square feet. This building was constructed in the early 1960s, along with the other commercial buildings that are located to the west and to the east. The existing building is a combination of wood and concrete masonry unit block construction with glass windows. It includes long cantilevered roof beams and roof overhangs. An access to the site is provided from both Tamil Pious Drive via a one-way drive aisle, and also from the rear of the site into a rectangular dead-end lot off of Meadows Suite. The project site is zoned C1, local shopping, and this slide shows the existing ordinance requirements and also the existing commercial building and the proposed residential building. The standards shown in this table are the commercial development standards in the C1 district, and the district does not include separate residential standards. The project complies with the majority of development standards with the exception of the rear yard setback for which a variance has been requested. It is. In October 2020, the Planning Commission held a preliminary discussion on the project. And based on the feedback that was received, the applicant moved forward with a formal application. This slide highlights the main points from that discussion. One of the items that was discussed at the study session was about the existing building on the site, and if it was possible to locate this building closer to Tamil Pious Drive to create more of a pedestrian access. And the site located to both the west and the east and this site were once one parcel, and three buildings were developed at approximately the same time. And the property was later subdivided into three parcels, and they are now owned by three separate property owners. And the challenge with relocating the building closer to the front property line is that there is an existing access that provides access to those three parcels. The site has a general plan land use designation of mixed-use commercial and is zoned C1. As shown on the slide, the allowable floor area ratio in the general plan is not consistent with the zoning ordinance. The proposed FAR of .4 is consistent with the general plan, and the allowable floor area in the C1 district is .34. And the zoning has not been amended to reflect the recent changes that were made to the general plan to increase the floor area for mixed-use developments that include residential. And in instances when the general plan and zoning are not consistent, the general plan controls what is allowed. The existing commercial building is setback from the front property line. The setback is just under 50 feet, and the proposed three-unit apartment building has a front setback of 42 feet, 7 inches. The first parking area is a one-way parking aisle off of Tamil Pious Drive. And this front portion of the site includes perpendicular parking spaces and then the drive aisle. The second parking area is a rectangular surface parking lot that is located east of the existing office building. And the applicant is proposing to construct the apartment building in this portion of the site. The number of existing parking spaces, which is 11, will be retained, and these spaces will be reconfigured. The project includes a major design review application for a new 2,560 2,560 square foot, three-unit apartment building. As noted, this building is proposed in the rectangular parking lot, which is currently a surface parking area. The north elevation includes a shared balcony, which will provide access to the three units. On this front, this front elevation is also the elevator and the front entry stairs. The maximum height of the structure is 30 feet, which is what is allowed in the C1 district, and the height of the second story is just over 22 feet. Proposed design includes curved roof to complement the adjacent commercial buildings, and the building materials include metal standing seam roof panels, smooth succo, and some limited areas of wood finishes. And there is a project color materials board at the dais for the commissioners to look at. Now, the project also includes three private balconies, one balcony for each of the individual units. And this slide shows the north elevation, which is the elevation that faces Tamil Pious, and then on the right is the east elevation, which is the elevation that faces the Bank of America. And this slide shows the south elevation, which faces Meadows Suite. Now, on this elevation, you can see the balcony, which will be access from the middle unit, and then this is also the entrance into the garage. And the west elevation faces the existing commercial office building on the property. Proposed project includes three two-bedroom units, which range in size from 752 square feet to 881 square feet. Proposed second level includes the entirety of Apartment A, the living area of Apartment B, which is the middle unit, and the entirety of Apartment C. And the proposed third floor includes the living, or the sleeping space of Apartment B, and it includes two bedrooms and two bathrooms. Construction of the project will require approval of a lot line adjustment with the adjacent property to the east, which is the Bank of America. The property owner seeks to obtain just over 103 square feet from the bank, and that's because a portion of the garage is located on the bank's property. And this area is highlighted in red towards the right-hand side of the slide. And in exchange, the applicant will transfer the same square footage, 103.6 square feet, to the Bank of America. And the applicant has had several conversations with the bank, and they have agreed to this lot line adjustment. And a condition of approval has been added to the project that requires that the lot line adjustment be approved by the town prior to the issuance of a building permit. The project includes two variance requests. The first is a rear yard setback. The required rear yard setback for the property is 20 feet. Typically, in the C1 district, the required setback is zero. However, in instances when the property located behind the site is designated residential, then a 20-foot setback is required. Proposed setback is nine feet, nine inches. This slide shows the required parking for the existing commercial uses. The parking standard varies per use, and it ranges from one space per 150 square feet to one space for 200 square feet. Required parking for the existing commercial building is 27 parking spaces, and each new apartment requires an additional space, so the required parking is 30 spaces. The site is developed with 23 and a half spaces, which results in a deficit of six and a half spaces. The mixed-use general plan land use designation does state that reduced parking standards may be allowed when the site is less than a quarter mile to transit. And in this case, the site, the closest transit is just west of the site, located on Tamil Pious, near 601 Tamil Pious. And the project also includes a variance to reduce the number of parking spaces, and in addition, to reduce the dimensions of those parking spaces. A parking study was done for this project, and parking counts were collected on two days, on a weekday and a weekend over a 14-hour period. And the study indicated that there was ample parking on the site to support the additional three units. This slide shows some parking space dimensions of other Bay Area cities, and the proposed project is similar to many of these dimensions required in other jurisdictions. The parking requirement in the zoning ordinance for a full-size space in a commercial district is nine feet by 20, and for a compact space is eight and a half feet by 18 feet. And the applicant is proposing nine feet by 18 feet for the compact spaces and nine feet by 16 feet for the, sorry, nine feet by 18 for full size and nine feet by 16 for compact spaces. The Public Works Department reviewed these dimensions and determined the sizes were adequate for this particular site. As part of the project, the applicant did outreach to the neighbors. A letter was sent to the single-family homes to the north, to the single-family homes to the southwest on Meadows Suite, to the church located to the south of the site and to the existing commercial buildings on either side. Now, the church provided a letter of support for the project, and we also received a letter from one of the residents on Meadows Suite Drive stating they did not have any concerns with this project. And that letter was provided to via email yesterday. In order to approve the project, the Planning Commission must make the required design review findings. I would like to point out that there is a new design review finding for multifamily projects for which this project is one, so this finding was included in your resolution. And this finding was adopted recently as part of the objective design and development standards. And in addition, the Planning Commission must also make the variance findings shown on this slide. And that concludes staff's presentation. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the project. I'm available for questions, and the architect and owner are also in the audience and available for questions as well.
Thank you, Martha. Before we get to a presentation from the applicant, I'll ask the commissioners if there are any questions for Martha. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions?
Yes. Martha, for the parking that is in the space of the new apartment complex, are three spaces designated for the residents and the others are for the tenants' use on either side?
Yes, that's my understanding that the applicant is proposing to dedicate one space for each of the apartments in the garage area, and then the other spaces would be for the commercial, existing commercial uses on the site.
Were there any problems noted with parking while the story poles were in place and the lot was inaccessible?
So the property owner worked with the church across the street, and they provided some parking for the tenants. The property owner could probably speak to more if how many of his tenants did have to park across the street while the story poles are up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Margaret.
I forget when I read this. It might have been a couple of weeks ago, even a month, that the Bank of America was thinking of closing that branch. Is there any impact on this project if Bank of America closes, and is there any coordination between what might happen?
So if the bank, yeah, I have not heard that news, but if the property did sell, then the applicant would need to enter into an agreement for the lot line adjustment with that new property owner. And there's also a condition of approval requiring a maintenance agreement with that adjacent property owner, and both of those would be required before a building permit would be issued. So.
And that little triangle that's off to the side that's empty?
Yes.
Who owns that piece of property?
So that's owned by 601 Tamil Pious, which is where the former Daphne Funeral Home, so that provided the parking for the building on 601 Tamil Pious.
And now what's the, what's the status of that?
So that property has been vacant for several years, I think upwards of four years. The applicant has explored some options, and it is actually included as one of our housing opportunity sites, which the commission may recall, but there's no active applications for that property.
I noticed that it's very overgrown at this point.
It is very.
Couldn't be used for parking with that overgrowth.
They would, they would need to trim some of the trees and the landscaping.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Mr. Rizzo.
Martha. The story poles were taken down Friday for, was that for safety reasons, or was that because there was an issue with not having enough parking?
So the story poles were taken down early, and that was something the town worked with the applicant and gave permission to take them down early, since it was an active site, and cars used that property, and they had to close off a portion of the site with caution tape because of the story poles. So because it was used, they requested that they take the story poles down early.
Is it being used for parking or being used just for?
People do park in those spaces, the commercial tenants.
And it seemed that when we were, when, in the parking, in the study that was done, I couldn't find a time when the parking lot was super taxed or the streets, the public streets next to the property. Is there a time, or maybe someone from the neighborhood, if they're here, will speak to, if there's a time of day that that's really concerning for the neighborhood, if there is any? Because I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see anything in the report.
I have not heard any specific comments from any of the neighbors citing parking concerns on certain times. The study did show that there was always sufficient parking on the weekday count and the weekend count. I believe the morning of the weekday count was when there was most cars parked, but even then, there was quite a few cars available both on the 645 Tamil Pious and also on the adjacent commercial, or the adjacent streets on Tamil Pious as well.
Thank you, Jim. Dan.
Yeah. Obviously, it's my first meeting here, so I'm, everybody, the applicant and the commission has spent a lot of time on this, so forgive me if I, I put my foot in my mouth. Is there EV charging for the residents?
The project will need to comply with the 2019 California Building Code. Our interim building official reviewed this project and made the statement that an EV charger may be required. So I don't have a super clear answer for you, other than if, if it's required for the building code, they will need to add an EV charging station. They will be adding solar, that is required per the building code.
And just, I noticed correspondence from a resident about the parking and counting the on-street spaces as part of the supply, and I think just in the future, where we're looking at that supply, that another project nearby is then saying that supply on the street is also there. So we need to be cognizant of, you know, granting a parking variance and looking ahead, you know, and not counting those spaces twice. I do have one sort of design question for the, maybe, I don't know, the architects here or the applicants here.
They will make a presentation, and you can ask at that point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I have a number of comments on the drawings themselves that are inconsistencies that I'd like to get on the record.
We can do that when we get to discussion.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you. Yeah. For Martha, you have no more questions.
No.
All right. Thank you. All right. So what we'll do then is return to the applicant, and who's going to make the presentation for you guys? All right.
Good evening. I'm Rich Prostine with Polsky Prostine Architects. Our office was asked by Mac, the Macian, to be the designer of the project on this property. Most of these, the summary for the project was in the staff report. I'm going to go over just a few high points. As, as you may have learned, the site is comprised of one-story office building that was built in the 60s, and what I would describe as a relatively nondescript structure with vague forest eastern design influences at the upturned skylight entrances. The parking in the property was laid out in conjunction with the bank building and the funeral home building as a unified development when it was first built. The three buildings were subsequently subdivided into three separate properties, as was mentioned. To the extent that Martha, I had a section about describing existing conditions. I'm not going to repeat. She went over why we're building it on the rectangular parking area, and she summarized a relationship to the adjacent buildings. So I do want to talk a little bit about the actual architecture. So I, I do want to talk a little bit about the actual architecture. The building's massing is seen from Tamil Pious and Meadow Suite, transitions from one story on the east and west side, stepping up to a two-story townhome. Middle apartment, using the curved roof surfaces in our judgment. Was a better way of transitioning the massing in this particular context than going with a flat roof or slope cable roof solution. We explored them all. We decided this was the one that worked best in the context. The main level exterior entries at the second floor are set back from the northern edge of the podium. So that the plantings and pots and, and planters can be provided, as you've seen. The foliage and the landscape generally is used as a design element to soften the elevations. But more importantly, to also partially screen views looking out from the apartments towards the hard surfaces of Tamil Pious and the parking areas. The period aesthetic of the adjacent commercial buildings, as well as the B of A, is particular to that area. Particularly in that brutalist use of large concrete surfaces. As an alternate to our echoing this hard, cold surface palette, the proposed building refers instead. To just the softened curved forms of the entry areas of those buildings in their entry lobbies with the obsolete curved skylight forms as well. To the Pete's Building across the way with the curved roof panels. The apartment structure will similarly have curved roof forms and smooth stucco exterior wall finishes. With limited areas of wood finishes to lend some warmth to the exteriors. The combination of materials and building forms mediates between the disparate scales of the commercial and bank buildings. While the vertical column forms supporting the second story, that's second floor entry terrace along the north side. Echo the vertical masonry columns of the commercial building and the vertical elements of the bank building. All of those are tied together with the strong horizontal of the terrace floor. The distinctive vertical form of the elevator enclosure anchors, anchors those elements. And it marks the western edge of the new construction as seen from Tamil Pious. Landscaping, as I mentioned, is crucial to the success of the design. The ground level parking area will be screened from Tamil Pious by a metal grid system. Onto which will be training vines, so this becomes a green wall facing the street and not simply a view into the parking garage. The remainder of the planting area in front of the grids will be planted with native grasses, as well as southern Meadow Suite frontage landscape areas. On the second floor entry, terrace planters, which are included in the landscape plan, will provide greenery to further soften the appearance from the north. And give the residents some privacy. At the planning commission work session that we had in October twenty twenty to review the preliminary design. The commissioners had a discussion about the potential for this property to somehow become a part of a larger redevelopment of the combined three properties on this block. Summarizing for those that weren't in attendance at that earlier meeting, while the three buildings were initially a single three-building development in the sixties. The properties have since been divided off into discrete parcels. But with the significant constraint of a shared parking access and a driveway. Which would preclude shifting any of the buildings closer to Tamil Pious for any more pedestrian-friendly experience. Without basically redesigning all of the buildings. There's been no discussion or really any sign of interest from the other two owners. And somehow banding together to promote a wholesale redevelopment of the properties. There's no opportunity for a larger broad brush approach to an integrated project. As the commissioners commented at the time, given the hard practicalities of the disparate ownerships. This project then appears well-suited by the siding and the design to add three well-needed units to Corta Madera's housing stock. So I will now take questions.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Pearlstein. Thank you very much. Um. Margaret, do you have any questions for, uh, the architect?
Well, just, and you said that it was, you just mentioned the word townhouse. Are these to remain as rentals?
Always rentals. Yes, they're not designed for condos.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Jim?
All right. I'm going to ask again. Over the last few months, the town's made great strides, um, and, and to providing other options, uh. In modernizing our zone, zoning ordinance, and I'm wondering if the applicant has taken a look at our new. Our new proposal at the new odds toolkit and to see if it might change his mind in the future to move forward with a larger project. Um, with possibly longer-term development with a.
Your question to ask.
Well, uh, you know, just a, a larger project that might, you know, in turn be a, a longer-term development investment and, and profit.
I can only speak as the architect. Um, I, um, I remember what, what the commissioners have variously. Uh, described and hinted at. Um, I don't know that Mac has, um, gone through the odds toolkit. Um, he and I have had brief discussions and I think it was, it had been raised when we, um, met. Almost two years ago about that larger possibility, but as I mentioned, there's been no movement at all from the other. Uh, property owners and the economics of, for instance, just on this property. Turning down the office building and restructuring the whole thing, that wouldn't make sense for, for Mr. Macian, so. I think in this instance, this, the project that is proposed is what he's certainly hoping to, to go ahead with.
Yeah, I just, um. I guess I'm, I'm, uh, fine. It's not a question.
Well, it is a question, right? And you asked it, so, um, put it on the table.
All right, well, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Dr. Bundy?
Uh, Rich, Martha talked about solar being required on the project. Is it going to be on this project? Or will it be on the adjacent building where it would be easier to install, I would think?
If you look actually at the roof plan in your drawing packet, it's actually on top of the third floor, that middle vault. And the panels in this instance, they'll actually be set close to horizontal and slightly off, but they're, they'll be up there. And what, what typically happens with panels is, once they've been installed. Ideally, somebody might go up every so often to wash them off, but otherwise, they will wash them off and they sit there for, you know, years and years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So Dan, now you can query the architects on your discrepancies.
Um, well, maybe just start. I'm, I'm interested in, in your thinking around, uh. Uh, the color of the elevator, uh, shaft, because it has no windows. And yet it now pops out. It's the most prominent thing of the whole project.
Yes, that to us, we, we found that interesting design ways as a, as a strong striking element. I mean, certainly we could, it could be muted down. We could make it tan or beige. But we, we thought it would be interesting to have a strong color access. So again, I guess you'd just say design preference in that respect.
Okay. Uh, so I do have some, found some inconsistencies in the drawings.
Okay, go ahead.
Now the time to go through those.
Sure.
Hopefully there are things that you can, uh, ask a question, which is, you know, which holds to be the case.
Sure. Uh, on drawing A one four. Um, the, uh, the drawing, I'm curious, which is correct? The drawings on the planter, uh, is different than in the floor plans of the building. On the front of the building.
So you're wondering the difference between, uh, A one four, the second, is it the second floor plan, going from memory?
Uh, A one four is, is the roof plan with story pole, but it's showing the planter in the drawing. Um, and then it's, it's, I'm not sure, it's, it's inconsistent with, uh, what's in the, it's in, it's in A one three. So I'm not sure which one is.
My guess is that A one three will control the second floor plan. A one four may have actually been referencing an earlier planter renovation. But, but the second floor plan and the planter placements are relatively deliberate, just in terms of maneuvering and, and accessing units.
And then on, uh, A two one, um, the, uh, what's referred to as, as, um. Oh, three, the cedar siding. The planters are shown as the same color. And so it could be interpreted, those are also cedar. So I think a separate label for those would be helpful for clarification.
Yes, good point on that, because your landscape architect set actually calls them as a lightweight precast.
Yeah, and, and actually on D two two, uh, which is a south elevation. Uh, it actually calls out the planter as cedar siding. So that would be the same, same thing. Um, and then on A two three, west elevation with vegetation. The landscape plan doesn't show any vines in that elevation. So either, either I would question whether the landscape plan is correct or whether the elevation is correct.
Um, I think the way I would say that is that I added vines to that west elevation. Because I think it's going to be much nicer for the office building and it may not have made it get to the landscape, but it will.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, uh, on L one zero, um. The, uh, on the west elevation, uh, again, in one drawing, it's shown as vines, but there's no vines in the landscape plan. So I don't know if there was intended to be and it's just missing. Um. And then in the landscape plan, L one one, um, again, the. And this is probably a, a, a good question, because it seems like the planter shown in the floor plan, which you said is correct. Is, is different than what's shown in the landscape plan.
Yeah, and I guess the best way to describe that would be. Um, the architectural plan and those configurations, we will aim for those. Um, and so eventually the landscape plan will be modified with her planting systems. Uh, you know, from what I understand of the plantings that she selected, I, I think they're reasonable for the, for the, uh, planters themselves. But the configuration will be driven by, driven architecturally, so.
So that's the planting, where the planters are located is, is correct.
Driven by A, A one point three.
Yeah, and then it's just a matter of continuing that planting around.
Correct. Yes.
That's it.
Okay, thanks.
So, no other questions?
No other questions.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I do not have any questions. Um. I would just like to say that, um, I'm glad to see the application filled with a good landscape plan and all the details.
Yep.
Unappropriately, thank you. Many confusing details as there are, um, it's good to see this, uh, complete like this. Helps a lot. Okay. Um, our next move for this project will be to take a public comment on this. So, um, if there any, if there's anyone in the room that would like to comment, you will have three minutes. Um, I'm looking online and I see that we've got seven attendees, but, uh, there's no hands up. So it's public comment time. You have three minutes. We'll time it and if anybody wants to step up and say something regarding this project, please do. Um. But we don't see any hands. How about some emails?
None, churches.
Okay, that's pretty definitive. So, should we count to sixty? No. Um, we'll close public comment for this item. We'll bring it back up here to the dais to discuss. Um, and, um, we'll talk about, you know, what we are. Uh, wanting to, uh, bring to the forefront and, uh, what we want to say about it, so. Um, I'm going to start with you, Dr. Bundy.
I, I liked the, uh, project when it was presented two years ago. I thought it, uh, looked like it would, uh, fit in. In a difficult situation, uh, you know, between unusual architecture. Uh, I believe you've done a good job on it. I like it now. I support it.
All right, that's fairly concise. Um, I'll move over to Margaret.
I actually went back to see what I said the last. And the thing that I was impressed with last time, because I just think it's a very, very, um. Good way of integrating those, what I consider to be kind of weird curved roofs. With the way that this is done. Um, I think the building is very nice. I think it adds a lot to that space. Um, it's disappointing that it can't be combined in a bigger project. I really, when I read that the Bank of America might be going out, I thought, ah, there we have it. But I guess that isn't going to happen. Um. I think there might be an issue with parking. When I was, uh, commuting into the city, I would drive my car. And park along Meadow Suite to take the bus from that bus pad. That's where those, um, city buses stop. And, um, and people also hang out there to get a free ride across the bridge or whatever they call that kind of carpooling. Um, and it was crowded at seven and eight thirty in the morning. So, um, I have some concerns about the parking there and then the other thing which. It, it's clearly, in my view, an apartment for adults. There, there's nothing to accommodate children in this kind of space and that's a little. I don't know how you would, because the space is tight and it's right on, uh, fairly busy streets. I think it's a, a, a very good design and I would, uh, say it meets all the standards we need to. Uh, to look at.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Uh, that's clear. Um, Mr. Rizzo.
Well, as you know, I'd like you to explore other options, uh, to expand the residential development of the capacity of. Kind of the new code that we're coming up with, but I understand we're, we're here and now and we're looking at the older code. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Pearlstein did a, a great job designing an attractive building with some great attributes. Um, as a standout structure, I still feel the composition's a little bit troubling visually with just the other buildings. I don't know what you can do other than, uh, what the architect has done to try to. Have a composition that works, uh, with his, his site conditions. Um, as far as the parking, I really don't have a problem with it. I, I feel like all the new codes. That are getting modernized for parking, um, are really limiting the amount of parking and trying to encourage other types of transportation. Uh, by not having so, so much parking accessible, so I really don't have a, a problem with that and find, making the findings for the variants either. Um, well, no, I think I can support, excuse me, the findings for the building and the variants.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, Dan.
Uh, you know, I, I, I think it's, uh, we really need the housing in town. I think it's really important for us. Uh, and I, and I think you've, uh, the architects done a very good job of responding to the context in this very, very difficult site. Um, and, um, I, I hope you could consider providing EV charging. That's the way things are going and I think a resident with an EV vehicle and no place to charge it is not going to rent here. Um, and, and, uh, other than that, I, I think, uh, the, the commission and the, and the. And the applicant have done a really good job getting us to this point.
All right. Thank you. Um, just a question then, how close is this EV charging regulation to reality? Anybody have any idea?
I'm virtually positive that, um, the code for multifamily requires one. As a practical matter, there will be one. I've driven electric for four years, so.
Okay, so. It's going to be in, uh, condition then somehow inside of this application when it comes for a building permit then? That reasonable to say?
Well, um, I think the comment from our, from our, um, building official at the time in the review of this application. Which was now, I think it was a year ago, was that it, the code, um. Use the word may require it. I would also note that we're going through a code cycle change this year, which is, makes it more likely. You know, I don't know what, if the intention is to get a building permit application, construction drawings in before the end of the year, but. Uh, I, I believe that, I don't want to speak on the current, on the next code cycle. But obviously every year we're getting more and more, um, requirements for electrification, including EV chargers. So, uh, you know, I think, um, I would go with what, uh, our architect, um, or the project architect is saying in terms of. Practical matter, it will be there, but, um, I can't say for sure at this point whether or not it's a requirement to the building code.
All right. We can, um, we can do something with that. Uh. I think that this was a, uh, a great effort at. I think that this was a a great effort at fitting something in that's unique, but not. Too similar to the other buildings. So it's a challenge. So you sort of reverse the arcs and made it distinctive enough. I think that one of the critical elements of this project is the landscaping design and the landscaping effort that goes with it. It's a good plan. It's well thought out and it's necessary. So I I really hope that it doesn't get abandoned. In the process, building and at the end of the budget and so forth, that it sticks with it because it's really critical. The parking screen at the front of the building is very nice so that you don't see the cars inside. I think that's a good plus. So for people who are living there. You know, they they drive by or people drive by and they don't feel like there's a parking lot underneath that building. I think that's a good thing. We saw the elevator tower on that project out there at. But yeah, two hundred Nellon, that was similar color in its original format. And we wrestled with that color, but it it ended up of its own accord somehow to be silver instead of the orange red. But it was, I understand highlighting it like this, and I think we all thought at the time that was a good idea. Creates some distinction for the property. So I can support it and I can support it wholeheartedly. So I think that. We have sort of a unanimous commission here for your benefit. I would then say, do we hear a motion for this project from anybody?
In the matter of design review application PL dash two oh two one dash oh oh four three DRC for a new. Two thousand five hundred and sixty square foot, three unit apartment building and variance application PL two one dash oh oh four four. For an encroachment into the required rear yard setback and to reduce the number of required parking spaces. And reduce the minimum parking space sizes at six forty five Tamalpais Drive.
All right, do we have a second on that? Okay, go for a vote.
Hi. No, hold on. Let's start. Commissioner Kenny. Commissioner Mendel.
Aye.
Commissioner Bundy.
Aye.
Vice Chair Rizzo.
Aye.
Chairman Chase.
Aye. So thank you very much and.
Thank you. Read the appeal rights, so.
Any member of the public may appeal this decision. There is a ten day appeal period. Forms are available at Town Hall and there's a three hundred dollar filing fee.
He has it memorized. That's great.
And Peter. I just wanted to say how well prepared they were for the study session.
Yeah.
And that's what made this so much easier.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
They did a good, good job.
Yeah, I think he did a good job guiding this through. All right, so tonight we move on to a business item, and this is a study session for. APN oh two six one four three one three. This is an empty lot between seventy three and ninety seven Sonora Way. This is preliminary review of a proposal to subdivide an existing point seven one acre lot. Between seventy three and ninety seven Sonora Way into three parcels and construct one two level single family home on each parcel. So. There's been some communication about this and Mr. Boyle, this is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Chase, members of the planning commission. Good evening. Tracy, you'll pull my PowerPoint. For this item. Just a review for Commissioner Kenny. This is a preliminary review, so it's just a discussion and no decision will be made. It's a conversation between the planning commission, the applicant and the public and and staff. And to get a initial read on how the commission feels about this project and the neighbors. So as Chairman Chase mentioned, this is a, this is an existing vacant lot up in Sonora Way. Up on the hills, I'll show where that is in a moment. It's point seven acres, a little over, little over three acres in size. And the proposal is to create three parcels. And create one single family home on each parcel. There is a discussion in in the staff report and in the in the materials of remainder area of land. To the east, to the very eastern edge of this site. I don't have a pointer, do I? No. And the owner of this parcel is discussing with ninety seven Snore. Whether they would be interested in in purchasing that extra area. And if that purchase goes through, then that extra area, and it's about two thousand square feet, double check. Then that extra area will go to ninety seven Sonora. If they don't reach an agreement to purchase that land, then that that area will go into lot three. So and I can get more detail of that if you have further questions on that. So the the parcel location is on east side of Corder Madera. Just boarding with the town of Tiburon and open space area, as you see there on on the map. This, this area was never developed when the subdivider built the land, built the area back in the in the fifties. Don't exactly know why, probably because it's, as you can see, you know, quite shallow. And quite steep as it drops off in the back of the the parcels, parcel. Here's a site and context plan that's showing where the the three lots are. I'll refer to lot one is is the western lot, lot two is the middle lot. Lot three is the eastern lot. And then on the image down below, you can see with lot one, you have quite a bit of flat, flat land, you know, the first half. And then it drops down lot two, which is the shallowest. And which the variance is being requested for the front, front yard variance of six feet is being asked for. It's again, quite shallow and quite steep. And then moving to lot three, again, you get a little bit of a flat area. And before that parcel drops down as well to a drainage area down below. These are some photos of the site. One on the left is is looking west and I'm more or less standing about in the middle of lot two. And and looking at lot one, which like I said before, is is kind of the largest and the flattest lot. And then the image to the right is looking east at lot two. One reference point is that power pole. If you look on your plan set, that power pole is about in the middle of lot two. It kind of gives you a perspective of where things are. You kind of, yeah, you can see it a little bit there. To the left is again, looking west at lot one. And then the photo to the right is just give you a sense of the existing homes that are across the street. Project summary, this is similar to what's provided in the plan set, though I did add a few other bits of information that weren't included. One is the, both have the floor ratio as well as the lot coverage, including the garage areas. And so each lot is going to be, you know, approximately ninety six hundred square feet. Code requires them to be at least seventy five hundred square feet in the R one zoning district. And the floor area of of the homes, all all two level homes. Roughly twenty five hundred to twenty six hundred square feet. Garages will be five hundred square, approximately five hundred square, five hundred square feet in area. So your floor ratio is about thirty two, thirty three percent. The code allows it to be a maximum of forty. And your lot coverage is about half of that. Also, code allows a forty percent lot coverage. Building height is maximum allowed is is thirty feet, and these are all just, just under that. And height is measured, as you'll see in the elevations, by basically drawing a a parallel line to the grade. And then, and then projecting that line above in space. And and then the the building cannot, if if that line was thirty feet above grade, the building, the building at no point can can permit, you know, can penetrate. That imaginary line. You know, show that in in an elevation. So the project as proposed meets all the requirements of R one zoning district, except for that one front yard variance. That they're asking for for lot two in in the middle. This, I'm just, I'll give you three examples of elevations for lot one. The elevations are pretty similar, as you can see in the plan of all three lots. As seen from the street, these look like, you know, single story homes, two car garage. Entrance door, entry door in the center. Applicant did not provide, you know, a lot detail in terms of siding material exterior. They may have, you come to more of our decision on that tonight, and they may speak to that. But again, this is a preliminary review, just kind of give you a a general idea of what what they're looking for. West elevation again shows how how the lots will, you know, greatly drop down and how the houses will. Will step down with the the lower area consisting of of the bedrooms. This shows that thirty foot height limit I was talking about, again, just an example of how that that height is measured. So that's your west side elevation and then the east side elevation. And then the rear, the rear elevation, and these, again, this is all of lot one. We're facing south into into the open space. There'll be first and second level decks on the rear. And side elevations of each of the homes. Literally no, really no backyard to speak of and and relatively small front yard, as you could see. And in the floor plan, again, giving you examples of what lot one looks like. You enter from the street, you have the the great room, the kitchen, living and dining room. And then a bedroom and and a full bath. And then the two car garage and then stairway leading you down. Downstairs. And again, there's, as you can see here, there's a deck off of the the great room. And also a deck off of the bedroom. And then dropping below, you have the master suite to the right. The sitting area in the middle where the stair comes down. And then two bedrooms and one bath. And again, kind of a deck off of the back. So that pretty much concludes my brief presentation of just kind of an overview of the project. As you saw on the staff report, the applicants did reach out to the neighbors. They sent out notices to everyone within three hundred feet, which is the the radius that we provide. It's about thirty neighbors that they reached out to. I believe some of them are are here this evening. And in in the packet, I provide you a summary of, you know, what the applicant, how he, how they conducted their neighborhood outreach. I also wanted to point out that this is, this project will need to do a complete SEQA or California Environmental Quality Act review. And because it is a subdividing of land that is greater than twenty percent in slope. And so therefore it's not exempt, which majority of projects you see are are exempt from SEQA, certainly. Single family homes. So this one is not exempt, so we will be hiring a, if it moves forward. Hiring a planning consultant to do the the SEQA analysis, and that will look at all potential environmental impacts of building this project. I think if the applicant also has, Commissioner Rizzo asked about cut and fill numbers. And the app, the architect and the applicant could talk about that if you're interested in in those numbers. And there was also a tree study done by a prior owner. And we have that on file of the trees that will be, need to come down. And again, that'll also be all part of the the SEQA analysis as well. So that concludes my report. Welcome to answer any questions, Jack.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. Before we jump into the commissioners, could you speak to the history of how this all came about a little more in depth? From how this became a application with three lots from a space that had been there for a long time. Without any.
Yeah, there's not, there's really not a whole lot of written record in in our files of of why, again, why this was wasn't built initially. And there is, as I mentioned in the staff report, there is a roadway easement. That was, that's printed on the final map, but I spoke with a public works department and as well as the applicant reached out. To the county and they see no reason that that easement, if can't be removed. If done through the proper channels and and done correctly. I think perhaps at one point, perhaps they thought, the developer thought, one. The town might build a road down into that open space and and develop that area. That's my only a guess. I can show you, you know. So it's a bit of a mystery why, you know, the developer didn't want to, perhaps. You know, the whole subdivision was pretty good sized lots, you know, relatively flat. And they probably saw this as, you know, quite a, quite an undertaking to construct it, and maybe that's why they they left them the way they are.
Who held title to this property piece? Was it?
It was ninety ninety seven. The the property owner to the east. Owned title to the parcel for quite a long time. And then, and I know I I dealt with a previous, a previous owner. Many, many years ago, I had a discussion with him. And then I believe he sold it. And so that's, that's the the information I have regarding the the prior ownership of it. But, you know, the current owner may even have more than I have.
Okay, so it's, it was a piece of land.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners, Dan, do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle?
Yeah. I'd like to see a limited work line and and. You said there was a tree study. It just identified, did that just identify? What trees were there or did it actually identify which ones had to be saved?
It it listed all the trees that were. It identified all the trees and identified all the trees that were to be removed. And the total number of trees removed from from that stadium. And this, you know, another study may be done, given that this study is fairly old and was done by a previous owner. Perhaps a future study will be done, but based upon the study that I do have, a total of sixteen trees are to be removed. And twelve of those are coast, coast oaks. So that was based upon the, again, the the previous design. And there's probably some minor changes in, you know, where the buildings are situated now as compared to. That design, so that number could change.
At what point would we request a limited work line?
A limited work line.
Where the grading and construction would stop. This is very steep slope.
Sure.
Obviously. You know, there's going to be a lot of earthwork here. So I'd be interested in what. What the limit of work is going to be and keeping that limited, that area of disturbance as small as possible.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, and that would be part of the the permitting process and part of the review process by a public works department. And so they will, they will look at the grading and and any cut and fill material that's being disturbed. And so they would, they would identify or they would have the the applicants, you know, identify that that building line in that that area of work.
Thank you.
Dr. Bundy.
So Phil, the the reason for SEQA is really just related to the slope that that greater slope requires SEQA.
Yes, I I think, I think another way to, like I said, another way to look at it is there, there are a number of projects that are exempt from SEQA. And one of, one of the exemption, one of the exemptions is. One can develop a a parcel, a small parcel of land. If the slope is twenty percent or less. This is not twenty percent or less. It's it's more than twenty percent. So this is not exempt. So they have to go through the SEQA process.
Thank you. The issue of the land that may go to the property owner to the west. Thank you. The uh issue of the land that may go to the property owner to the west, that's what's currently fenced off now?
I I believe it is. I don't know if that's the exact delineation, but I believe so. Thank you.
Margaret, do you have any questions?
Um, when I was there and looking down, it's very uh dry brush. Has the fire department been over there?
Um, the the fire department hasn't taken a detailed look at it at this point, because this is a preliminary review. Um, you know, I imagine um the neighbors might know. I imagine the fire, hopefully the fire department is over there kind of on a regular basis, you know, regardless of this project. Um, but certainly, you know, that will be an issue that will be examined and and considered as as part of the SEQA document, part of the application that um the, you know, the land, if the town perhaps requires the applicant to to thin the area for fire protection.
And I guess I just want to um, should I just assume that the water, water and sewage and all that would, sewage would be taken care of in the permitting process?
Yes, like, yeah, and through through the application, we will, you know, send it to the Marine, Marine Municipal Water District. And they, you know, determine and will send us a, it's called the will serve letter saying there's adequate, there's adequate or not adequate water to to provide for for three homes.
And and when you pointed out that um hole in the middle of lot two, is that going to remain there?
Um, that's a good question. Um, our our general policy is to underground utilities for new homes. Um, I I don't know exactly if that pole, actually, you know, that pole must be serving another home, because otherwise it wouldn't be there, so I can't speak to that exact. For sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Margaret, um, then on to you, Jim.
If I can get to see more, okay. I've got a few questions. I might even have one for Ann, because I think that she looks like she needs a question. But um, I'll start off with Bill. Are there any town-related environmental issues in developing so close to a creek? I know the county's got a few, but is there anything in our ordinances that you have additional setbacks from creek beds that you are aware of? Because I'm not aware of it, I'm just curious, because.
Not, not that I'm aware of specifically in in Corder Madera's code, but certainly the county has requirements.
I think there is, that is county on the other side, correct? No? It's Tarragon?
There there are, and and the public works department does require stream bed. If if you get in, within a certain distance of the stream, you're actually altering the stream bed. There's this, it's called the stream bed alteration permit, which then also does get into uh various other environmental agencies that you may need to consult with to determine what are, you know, basically standard practices. Um.
But it looks like the houses are out of, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
That initial setback that our town might have embedded in some of the ordinance. The, this is sort of two applications, right? I mean, we're we're talking about the houses and then we're talking about the lot splits, or is this meaning like, like they could come forth and just do the lot split without having the building envelopes reviewed?
They they could if they like, and and they are, the owner is choosing to do it all together as one. So this is one application with several pieces, you know, lot split, design review for the homes, variance for the one home, and SEQA, SEQA analysis for the whole project. So they're they're doing, he he's choosing to do it all at once, but he certainly could.
And 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 when they come across, when the building permits come across, are they individual permits, is this as a development sort of? I'm just curious how permitting works. Um, it's one planning application for three houses?
Yes.
And but I I would imagine for the building application, you have three separate applications?
Uh, typically.
Typically, yeah.
Sort of, it sort of can do it both ways, but yeah, ultimately likely, like we're doing over at Robin Drive, there's there's sixteen different building permit numbers, even though they're sort of processed at the same time.
And if if they decide to not build all three of them and one of them stays vacant for a number of years, they lose the planning side of the permitting. And they'd have to come back just, I'm, I would just say two of them got built and
Right.
and the economy didn't we have to come back and get it reapproved after a number of years?
Well, the, yeah, the designer view um approval is is good for a year, and then if they can, one can um achieve a um at a an extension of another year, so it's good for two years. So yeah, if they get this whole thing approved, and then something happens like you just described, um, it could, it could end, the one, the one remaining house, let's say, could end up having to come back and to see you again. Um, if it's pro- if it's the exact same house and not a whole lot has changed, it would probably done very quickly, but you also could develop two lots and then sell the third to somebody completely different, and they build a completely different house or propose.
Yeah.
Yeah, there. Is that the, isn't that the COVID, the COVID?
No.
No.
But it's an interesting interpretation question, to be honest, because what our code says is that essentially the issuance of a building permit tolls, or I don't know, toll is the right word, but it actually um uh sort of is what you need in order to actually um make the design review sort of what I'm trying to say, you know, saying tolls, toll is the wrong word here, but essentially you're into building permit world once you actually get issued the building permit. And so the, you don't have to go back and redo designer view once you get the building permit issued per code.
Yeah.
So on separate buildings, you know, if it it does depend, I would imagine on the different lots, if they are subdivided, they are legal separate lots. Each building permit is going, if they apply from individually and they never get to the third one, there may be an issue with the third one not actually, you know, complying with the design review permit.
Because the act of, if it's one permit and you're starting, it's a two-year build and a two-year build to, this could be going on for eight years.
Correct.
In theory, but.
But I, it's a, yeah, it's an interpretation question, and I don't think we've ever faced, um, so.
Are you asking if the lot subdivision is separate from the building permits?
Well, what I'm asking is, is you have a planning permit, right, that's good for three years. Um, and you have to have an active permit, uh, an active building permit to build. If I'm building sequentially, because I don't, I don't have enough money to build all three of them, and then I start on this one, and then right at the two years, I started another one, and then it 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 kind of exacerbates the amount of time that you can build under a certain code and a certain approval. That's just curious, but we could bring it back when the
Yeah.
You can, uh, maybe we'll review that further.
But that's a legal question too. Is the permit from a property right? You treat it as a piece of your right. That's a legal.
The house will be permitted separately from the establishment of the lot, so the the lot comes at that point, it is rights to build are writing with the lot.
That's what you're talking about.
Right to build so you could sell the lot?
Yeah.
With that right?
Yes.
But but my question is, is they go for one building permit for all three properties, right? And then they start with one house. And then that house is two years, then they start the next house, and then they start the next house, or is it one separate building permit for each individual lot, and they have to start within those two years?
It, I think, as as Adam mentioned before, I think they would be getting three separate building permits. Even even if they, even if they brought them all in the same day, and we're going to start working on three set, I think there would be three separate packets, um, because each, you know, each house is slightly different, each lot is slightly different.
In any case, yeah, I think that one's pretty clear. I know we're going off a little bit of tangent, but to get there, hold the discussion. That one's pretty clear. If you, if you get the building permit, that means that you don't have to go back through designer view. Now you have, are in the building permit, building permit expiration, though.
Yeah.
Code requirements, and you could get expired on the building permit.
Okay.
Um, and we do have uh a sort of a, after a reasonable amount of time, conditions could change where there is the discretion of the planning director to send it back. You know, let's say nobody ever builds, get a building permit, means you're good on it, but after a reasonable amount of time goes by, the conditions have changed, and you need to go back for designer. Okay, this is, it's, it's, it's sort of a gray area. We don't encounter very much.
My my next two questions are those. Won't be as long. Um, Phil, did you have an opportunity to visit any of the houses across the street to see if any of the main living spaces were at the front of the buildings or at the back of the buildings?
I I did not, I did not go into any, any of the homes across the street. Um, and just looking at them, I'm I'm pretty sure a number of them have living rooms that face the street. Um, but that type of analysis and will um certainly happen further down the road, you know, when there's um an actual application, and if if that's a, you know, concern of neighbors' views, um, I will definitely, if I'm invited, will definitely go into their homes and take photos like I've done in the past.
And then my my last question is just for Ann. Um, Joe, I'm just curious, you know, this land, a piece of land has been vacant since the since the subdivision was built. Uh, do do the neighbors have any legal right to keeping it as open space?
Uh, I I think you're talking about prescriptive rights that can be acquired through time. They are very, very difficult to establish. Uh, you usually have to show that you yourself have used the property openly and notoriously over a period of time. Uh, it's almost impossible to establish that the public has a right as the public to use the property, so people would have to show that they've done this. The burden of proof would be against them. And before the town could make an assumption that they have such rights, I would suggest that they would need to go to court and quiet title to that effect. It would be a pretty rocky road for them to follow.
Thank you.
Do you have something else?
Uh, yeah, Phil, uh, when I looked at the the lots and the setbacks, it looked like the uh uh porches of one and three were also in the uh front yard setback uh by a little bit. Uh, so would they require a variance, or is the porch not included in that as uh needing a variance?
The the porches would not, would not require variance, because they are allowed to encroach into a a limited distance into the front yard setback. Um, so they, those were, the porches would not require variance as they're designed at this point.
Thank you, Bob. Um, Margaret, in looking at the uh street photo, that power pole is going to take uh uh active Congress to get moved. Yeah, that, and I'll let the the applicant deal with that, but it's, it serves a lot of homes up and down that street, so um what the heck they would do. Anyway, I think it's time for the applicant to make a presentation, so you've been patient. Um, please uh step up and um make your presentation.
Yeah, okay. Uh, good evening. I'm Kyle Thayer, the architect for the project. And um I I just want to assure the the neighbors and and the board. Um, I've been in practice here in Marin for almost thirty years. Um, my father, John S. Thayer, practiced architecture in Mill Valley and in Oliver Marin between nineteen seventy and nineteen ninety-five, when I took over the practice. So we have a long history of working on hillside lots in in Marin County and are sensitive to the range of issues that one finds in in developing hillside lots, and that that includes um, you know, bringing in professionals at the appropriate time, which um chief among them would be the um geotechnical engineer to assess the soil's capacity to put a house safely on that property. The um structural engineer, which uses the information from the uh geotechnical engineer, um, and certainly on this property, the civil engineer doing a drainage plan is going to be key to stabilizing the slope and making sure that that surface water has a place to go, and um, so a- a- all of that is on our radar at the appropriate time. Um, at this stage, we're really just wanting to show the board and and the neighbors kind of what we have in mind, get some feedback and, you know, li- listen to comments and and adjust our design as as appropriate. Um, so thank you for this opportunity to present these three houses on Sonora Way. As Phil mentioned, this is um nearly three quarters of an acre parcel, which we're proposing to subdivide into um three home sites, and then this extra two thousand square feet, which uh may go to uh a a a neighbor. Uh, and if if that neighbor isn't interested in purcha- purchasing that, uh, I guess it's about a twenty-one hundred square foot parcel, we would just add that to uh lot three, making that lot uh about eleven thousand seven hundred square feet instead of uh ninety-six hundred square feet. We considered briefly proposing four homes for this site, and we could have achieved four legal lots, but felt that that was not a good idea in this case. Um, it would be, so so we're we're proposing the three, which results in less intensive use, less traffic, fewer curb cuts, and these larger lots would have more um green space buffer between the houses. Um, and in a worry zone such as this, this means that it's easier to achieve defensible space around each home as required by the fire codes. Portions of all three of these lots are quite steep, but lot two in particular is steep and narrow due to the curvature of the roadway. We we are requesting a front yard variance for this home, allowing the structure, structure to be built fourteen foot from the front property line where twenty foot is required. The variance helps us create a more functional floor plan, garage and driveway, particularly the slope of the driveway, and allows the house to be located in closer proximity to the front yard. Um, there still would be room for fill in the front yard of lot two. I I just want to briefly talk about the the cut and fill, and you know, there's a lot of numbers here, but and I'm I'm happy to share them. I actually, Phil, Phil has them, I I sent as an email, but lot one proposes one seventy-two cubic yards of cut, one fifth, one hundred fifty cubic yards of fill uh at a retaining wall below the house, which doesn't show on your drawings, but it would be a a four-foot high retaining wall with just just creating a level pad for some of that fill. Uh, and twenty-two cubic yards of off-haul, that's for lot one. For lots two and three, we've balanced the cut and fill utilizing um extra fill from lot three and putting it in the yard of lot two. So lot two is eighty-four cubic yards of cut, one hundred and forty-two cubic yards of potential fill. And so the math is that we would need another fifty-eight cubic yards of fill on lot two to, you know, to balance that out, and we're, and we're taking that from lot three. The numbers for lot three, one twenty-seven cubic yards cut, sixty-nine cubic yards fill, fifty-eight cubic yards therefore is left over to be moved to lot two. So we've, uh, we're sensitive to trying to balance this cut and fill, so I hope that gives at least a a picture of that. That, these are my calculations. Um, and a a civil engineer would, at the appropriate time, do a more um careful analysis of this, and those numbers, you know, can change, but I think this is a good estimate for tonight. Um, very quickly, the the home design uh issues, um. Each home has a unique custom floor plan with different arrangements of the entry stair placement, sometimes floor levels, and then the garage location. Um, however, there are common features that uh are found in all three. Each has a two-car garage uh at about four eighty-five square foot each. Each has decks on the south side in various locations off of living areas with views southward into the open space. Um, the garage and living area for each are on the upper floor, the entry level with the bedrooms down below. Um, the garage and living area for each are on the upper floor, the entry level with the bedrooms down below. Um, the height of each home appears as one story when viewed from the street. Uh, materials, um, the siding is bird and batten painted with stucco accents, probably more on the sides and the downhill, um, faces. And again, from the front, a base of stone visually anchors the buildings to the ground. Windows would have, um, wood trim and divided lights for a traditional look. Um, gable ends would extend this updated traditional theme and help break up the mass of the building. Roofing material would be composition shingles for aesthetics and fire safety. Um, these quality materials are combined in a way to create a pleasing updated traditional look that fits in with the existing residential, um, homes, residential themes i- in the area. And Phil, I'm wondering if you could show the street view on my drawings, it's one sheet one. Sorry, A one point four. And I don't know if the board has a packet, but you could see it there. It's this.
We can pull that up during the screening.
This is real, real quick. I just want to make a point about.
The commission does have that sheet as well.
Okay, so it's A one point four. That, that, that's it. Yeah, boy, that's pretty hard to see. Um, there we go. Thank you. All right, so I the, these two are the same view, but the, 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 the section through the ground of the lower one is closer to the buildings. And I wanted to point out that, I mean, the reason for both of them is that the upper drawing is the section through the street looking at the buildings. So we're further away in the upper view and you can see that for lots three and lots two, the lower portion of each of those homes is below the level of the street. So th- these are not, in, in particular, lots two and three are not aggressively overlooking the, the, the street or crowding the street in any way. Um, so the height, the visible height of lot three in that, in that upper view is fourteen foot high. And that's to that ridge, which is actually downhill. Um, and then the lot two, the height is eleven foot six, eleven foot seven. Again, the visible height. Um, lot one is more level with the road and it's about seventeen feet high. So our, our feeling is that, you know, we're, we're, we're sensitive to the neighbors o- o- on the street and, uh, Adam will talk about the outreach that was done to inform them of, of this proposal. But, um, th- these are not aggressive two-story buildings when viewed from the street. All of the height, that twenty-nine eleven height is as measured on that south side where we're fighting the slope and sort of working with, you know, sort of more severe constraints. But up at the top, we've tried to keep them low. Um, also between lots two and three is a forty-foot buffer. I, I did not, um, uh, to mention that, but it's, um, between lots, uh, sorry, between houses two and three. That's a forty-foot four and between houses two and one is over sixty-seven feet. So again, we're not crowding, we, we, we've shaped these lots in such a way that the homes have some breathing room around them. And that translates into sort of yard spaces for the three homes. But it also translates into open corridors, which neighbors across the street will have, um, you know, uh, views beyond into the open space. So that's, that's my, um, statement for the time being and I'm available for questions.
Okay, um, I think that will let, uh, your partner then make his presentation and we'll ask you guys both some questions if necessary. Yeah.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Adam To. Uh, I am one of the partners at Monterey Development, uh, who acquired the subject lot. Um, so we have been doing real estate development, uh, since twenty-ten and, um, our group also uh, operate several kitchen and floor storefronts in the East Bay and South Bay. Um, we primarily focus on building, um, distinguished single-family custom homes that are green and sustainable. Um, here are some of the, uh, single-family project that we developed in the past. And, um, this one is in San Francisco. This one is in Cupertino. Uh, this one is in San Jose. Um, this one is in Atherton. And then, uh, this one is in Palo Alto. Um, when we first, uh, visited the subject lot, uh, we are, we really liked the block and the neighborhood. And, uh, we could see the potential, um, of, uh, uh, building a single-family home there. So we worked with Kyle, um, our architect to come up with design um, that we feel would suit the neighborhood the best. Um, so when we have the preliminary design, um, our team actually walked the neighborhood and, uh, we doornup, uh, all uh, thirty-one households, um, because we always prefer the, um, the opportunity to be able to talk to all the neighbors and hear their feedback and present, uh, what we are proposing, um, with regards to the development. Um, of all the thirty-one households that we talked to, um, fifteen of them were neutral, uh, I guess neither supporting nor objecting to the design. Um, two neighbors expressed concerns. Uh, five neighbors strongly supported the project. Um, and there were nine that are not at home, um, but we left drawing and contact information so that, you know, they could get in touch with us. Um, yeah, so, um, that's my introductions and if you have any questions, um, let me know.
Okay, thank you. We'll check with the commissioners here to see if anybody has any questions for either of you. So, uh, Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions for these folks?
Got a few quick ones. Um, it looks like on the elevations that the materials aren't really wrapping around, uh, the facades. Are, are you proposing that we just have board and batten on the face of the building and then stucco, big stucco masses or are we going to break up the facade?
Right, it's, it's a great question and, and the drawing is exactly what you say. Um, no, I think we, we put the main effort in terms of materials into the front elevation and from a design perspective, those, those materials would want to wrap and we would, we would use stucco in sort of judicious ways and complimentary ways. So, so right, I think, I think that as the project moves forward, we would refine some of those decisions and, um, certainly make it a three-dimensional, um, yeah, so.
Um, and, uh, were there any schemes to try to narrow that that lot two to try to, have you guys tried to develop something that didn't require a variance, like maybe moving, making it a little bit longer?
Right, um, we, we did, I mean, I, that, that, that one was the, the, the problem lot and you know, having done this a lot over the last, uh, few decades, I, I know that variances can sometimes be, you know, I mean, we're, we're, we're asking for something where, you know, that's, that isn't, um, conforming. And so I, I, we realized that that's, um, you know, an issue, but we felt in this way, in, in this case, that, um, we would at least try to, you know, show that, that it really was necessary in this case. Um, be- because of the curvature of that road, it, it squeezes that middle, um, lot. And so we're fighting the downhill setback and the uphill setback. And so the actual building envelope is not large enough to get a garage in there. I mean, it, it really was tough. And so with just a little bit more, um, I think we're asking for a six-foot relaxation of twenty feet. So it becomes, comes fourteen feet setback. It, it allows us to sort of create a normal garage and, and some normal-sized rooms, so.
And my last question is, would you guys be open to different materials on the different houses so they don't look all some homogeneous?
What? Yeah, yes, a- a- absolutely.
That's all I have. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, Margaret, do you have any questions for these guys? Okay, all right. All right. To my right over here, Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, I think, uh, following up on Jim's question about that middle lot, did you look at moving that middle house, you know, either to the left or the right and rea- realigning the lots, uh, or maybe, you know, making, uh, you know, one of the lots, uh, uh, somewhat smaller so that you would have more of a flat surface to be on, so you wouldn't have to have that variance?
Yeah, it's, it's the nature of variances that the, the variance is granted because of a particular feature of a lot. It's not up to the will of the owner or the architect to, to sort of create a hardship. It's, it's like the, in, in order for variance to be granted, it's the, it's the physical nature of the, of the lot. And in this case, the steepness, there, there, there is very little level part of lot two. It, it's, it, it's begins to slope very quickly. And so with a twenty-foot setback, the building would be way down the hill. I mean, it would be, it would be poking, it's, it's hard to explain, but, but in section, you know, the, the, the slope is steeped that it would be sort of a two-story building, you know, way, way down the hill. So, um, we've tried with the lots sizes as they are to make that work. Um, we, we haven't reconfigured the lots, the, 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 the property lines to really look at, look at that even more carefully. But it's a, it's a barbell-shaped um, building envelope. So it's, it's wider at the, at the ends, east and west, and it skinnies down in, in, in the middle. So it's, it's very odd to try and get, build a house like that. I mean, you, you'd have the living room sort of at one end and the garage at one end and a hallway connecting them. And you know, it would be a very unconventional house and not at all in keeping with the vibe of, of, of the street.
Well, the, uh, I guess the other thought would be to really try to move the house back and then request either a height or a rear setback variance to accommodate that. Uh, is that something you looked at?
Um, well, no, no, because again, the, the automobile needs to come in off the street. So that's a given, you know, like out at the, out at the street, there's a, there, there's a top of curb elevation. And so I've tried, we've tried to balance, you know, to, 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 to get the car to come, come onto a driveway that isn't super steep. And, you know, so it means that the garage has to be up at a certain level so that, you know, it's less than six percent slope down to the garage and you need an apron, you know. So there's, there's various design things that have to happen, but no, we did not look at a rear, um, uh, setback variance in, in this case, because that would have exacerbated things even more. I mean, it would have taken things down the hill and we were trying to.
Well, I think I was thinking of, uh, a cantilever driveway that would be level, that would go to the house that was further set back. Uh, and then, you know, ask for a rear or height variance if that went over. Uh, you know, thinking about a number of homes that, uh, we've approved or, or looked at that are on steep slopes. You know, they'll have a driveway that's cantilevered out and some homes that really have, you know, not much on the upper level except the, uh, garage and then stairway or elevator going, you know, down to the low levels.
We, we didn't look carefully at that.
Okay, the, uh, I mean, if, if this is approved, this will have a big impact on the neighbors across the street that have had this, you know, great view all this time. And I think Martha, uh, brought up a good point about that, uh, power pole and I'd looked at that also. Had you given any thought to trying to underground the lines between the two existing power poles on the, uh, uh, north side of the street, uh, so that you could do underground power to, uh, uh, your, these new, uh, houses and allow the other neighbors that are going to be impacted by this that are between those two poles to also get in on undergrounding the lines to their house?
I, I know that that has been discussed. Um, I, I had a client that owned this property before Adam purchased it and I think he had some discussions, maybe even with PG&E and the, it, it, it kind of comes down in part to, to the money. I mean, it's, it's a tremendously expensive, um, enterprise to, to, to do that. And I, and I don't know what the numbers were, but it was something that, um, was looked at and, you know, that's, that's about it.
I mean, just trying to do things that if this was approved, that would sort of mitigate, uh, you know, some of the, uh, impacts of those neighbors. So those were the, you know, the two things that I was thinking of in particular.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, uh, that's, those are the, uh, th- those are the two concerns that I had, this, the issues, uh, really with the variance and the, the impacts on the views.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Dan, Mr. Dan.
Yeah, yeah, you mentioned that, um, it was mentioned that, uh, you develop sustainably. Uh, uh, are you planning on, uh, having, uh, energy, uh, for the houses non-carbon? Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, so for lot two, uh, I'm just curious, uh, when I look at the site plan, it appears that, uh, the property line is at least ten to twelve feet or something like that off the sidewalk. So all of that flat land that is in front of the house is actually right-of-way and that's city property.
I, I, I'm sorry, uh, for, for lot two. No.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, I'm, I'm not counting on that level. I mean, we're not developing.
No, no, I just want to confirm that that's where the property line is.
Yeah, 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 exactly. It's, it's well out into the level part of the, what, what level part there is on lot two.
Right.
Some of that is taken up in the.
And then the fourteen foot from there.
That's correct.
So that puts it probably twenty-two feet off the road or something.
Correct.
Yeah, correct. And.
Thank you for pointing that out, right. It's, it's to the property, property line, not to the, not to the pavement or edge of road.
Right, so in many cases, we run up against people that are trying to fit a, uh, get a variance for, uh, this same condition, put a garage in tight to the street or the sidewalk and they can barely fit a car there. In this case, you'd be able to easily fit a car in that space in front of the garage.
Correct.
Um, I was just looking at the homes across the street and I see that they are twenty feet, it looks like to the setback and the car just fits between the sidewalk and the house because they don't have that right-of-way. The, the property line is. right of way. The property line is at either the street or at the edge of sidewalk.
At the sidewalk, maybe, yeah.
So there's a big difference between this side of the street and the other side of the street. There is not a buffer, so to speak, from the sidewalk to the property line. You have that there. Just confirming that, okay. And it looks like in shot that is there that half the homes on the other side of the street are fed from that power pole. I don't know what you do, frankly, you know, the little PG&E, let's get undergrounded, right? That's a problem, so.
Well, is is it the case that Corte Madera requires new homes to be undergrounded? Is that what is that part of what we're talking about here?
Do you want to answer that? Or I can answer. It's from the from the poles. The pole is in the right of way, so it's from the poles to the homes. Or the
Oh, okay.
Is where the requirement is to underground.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, so that pole could stay there feeding the neighbors across the street, and you would have underground utilities.
Right, yeah.
Well, yeah, there's a couple of different things there. There's undergrounding the neighbors' service. And then there's moving the pole and undergrounding the the, you know, the whole deal up and down the street.
Good luck with that.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Um, thank you. Any other questions from the? All right. I think it's high time that we got to public comment on this. So let's open it up for public comment. You have three minutes to stand up in front of the microphone and make a comment.
Hi. Hi, good evening. My name's Carl Crowe. I live at seventy-four Sennor Way, directly across the street from the subject property. I'll, first of all, I want to say that the folks came and did do some outreach and talked and I have a lot of feedback for them, gave them a lot of feedback that I haven't gotten any response from, and we hope that they will do more feedback with us and in order to make this project more palatable. I'm, I didn't realize you're not voting tonight, so I'm not gonna I'll use my time to give you a little history. Harry Marlowe lived at that property. They were original owners back in nineteen fifty-eight. The Chevron Corporation had mineral rights and the access road right for the other three or for the other lot that was next to it. When they decided and environmental laws came in and that they were not going to go in there and look for any kind of carbon fuels or whatever it may be, they asked Harry if he wanted to buy the property, and he did, and I think he paid five thousand dollars for it or something like that back in the sixties. He loved having it as open space. When he was well into his nineties, I offered his children and him many, many times to buy the lot so that we could keep it open space. I had discussions with the town of Tiburon in order to buy it and donate it to the town of Tiburon, and they suggested they might not take it because they didn't want to have to take care of it. And because it is open space, it would cost them more to connect it with the open space. There were just too many hurdles, and for such a small piece of property, it wasn't really something they wanted to enter into a discussion with, and I wanted to make that a condition if I did buy it. When it did come up for sale, we didn't have the opportunity to buy it. When it came up for sale again, we didn't have the opportunity to buy it. So everything was done privately. We wanted to keep it open space. Now that it's going this way, you know, I'm not against the project. I'm going to wait for the environmental review to come back. I'm curious to see. I know gravity, and if you put a bathroom downstairs, I have no idea how you're going to get it to the public sewer on this side. You have open space. You have a community, a stream that goes through an open, protected environment in the back there. Lot lines you talked about, I hope you will continue to ask questions about build lines. I will also be talking to the Planning Commission and Tiburon to make sure that they take a look at this to see the impact on that Tiburon open space also, and I hope you will do the same thing to make sure that this comes through. All I'm saying is, I will have more to say after Sequel comes back, because I'm really curious to see what happens there. Other than that, I'm not against it. I just want to make sure that it conforms, and I'd like to bury the polls, even my poll. I tried to do it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Becky Bierston. I live at fifty-four Sennor Way. You've seen my picture in those beautiful shots from across Lot Three. That's my yellow house with the blue door. I've lived there for twenty-four years, and I just want to say thank you so much for listening. I know there's a lot of different perspectives in this room, and I'm just appreciative that you're taking the time to hear mine. I submitted a letter to the commission. I'm just going to briefly restate my three of my areas of concern. Number one is, as you can see from those photos of where my house lies and where that first house would go, it completely takes away the view that I've enjoyed for twenty-four years and the view that's been open space for the entirety of the neighborhood. I would say my house is probably one of one of many that are drastically impacted by any building in this section of Sennor Way. I also believe that this particular project is overbuilding on a parcel that was never intended to even hold one home, let alone three homes, especially as we've been talking about that middle home and how precarious it is. There's a reason that no one else has ever built on that land, and I'd like just some I appreciate that you're considering how that second house specifically is going to impact with any variance, the rest of the street, in addition to the overall look of the neighborhood. Also, if you have been on our streets in Norway, you'll notice that every single house is exactly the same. Some are left facing, some are right facing. None of them look anything like any of the houses that are proposed in these drawings. These would stand out and are just not aesthetically at all in like with any houses you'll see on Sennor Way. I have worries about this particular curve. We've talked about how the impact of the house building is, but it's really a blind curve. And if you not only come to the street, but come to one of the driveways that's existing on the street, particularly my driveway and maybe some of the others, you'll see that when you pull out, it's very much a blind curve and to then have three more homes on, especially one with a variance and a garage somewhat closer, it's going to drastically, you know, impact all of us coming down the street by car, by pedestrian, and I do hope there's also a traffic study, a safety study, and how that looks. I have a lot of other worries about this build. And I'd like to say that I know the developer did say he reached out to neighbors, and maybe he did reach out to some. I was lucky enough to actually pull into the driveway at the time that they were at my house, and I did get simply the drawings. I got no contact information. I asked my next door neighbors on both sides and across the street over. They got no drawings, no contact information and did not. Maybe they weren't home, but they did. There was no follow up of any type. So I was the one who forwarded them plans that were given to me. Like I said, when I just was lucky enough to be pulling into my driveway at that moment. So if we go forward with this project, I would love some more input from all of the neighbors and some better communication because we're going to be in this relationship a long time, probably many years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I really can't add anything. I'm Susan Burton. I live at fifty-eighth Sennor Way, which is directly across the street from Lot Two, I think, unfortunately. And I cherish that beautiful, beautiful view of the open space, which will be severely impacted. It definitely will be more congested traffic wise there. I mean, Becky, sort of all the points that I have, she kind of covered, but that's true, backing out of driveways with at least three to six more cars or whatever will have an impact on that. And I'm forgetting what the third point is, but I, she really covered the things that concerned me, too. It's the view, the congestion and safety, and the length of time that the project will be going on. And also, I question if there's no backyard for those properties. How are they going to have defensible space with an open area there? I mean, that I have trouble maintaining defensible space, you know, and that's definitely a concern, too, because wildfires were not around when these houses were built. And with the aesthetics, definitely, there is a certain period aesthetic, to use the words of the architect, the previous architect. And maybe it is from the fifties and sixties, but even the renovations have kept up with that. And it's charming and sweet, and we all cherish, you know, that little turn in the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know what I'm going to ask? Do we have any hands?
Chair Chase, I don't see any hands raised with our remote participants. No emails.
Okay, we've got some listeners, but no participants, so, all right. All right, then. Thank you for your commentary. We will close the public comment section of this item. And we'll bring it back up here for some discussion and some feedback to you guys about this project. So it is not a slow, short process. We got a long way to go here, it seems. So Sequel report and so forth is going to be coming. So what is the next step for this project before we talk about it up here?
One next step for the project really revolves around the applicant. After they hear the feedback, they can choose to make changes, come back to you for preliminary review. Again, they could choose to make changes and then move and then move forward with the Sequel document and move forward with a, you know, formal application in that way. Those are two, kind of the two big options. So it's really up to them.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, that said, let's see how you feel about this, Margaret.
I just a general comment first. I always, I think this is the first time that it's really come to my attention, but I always feel like, or I have felt that the geological studies and soil studies part of it comes very late in the game. It seems to me that that's so critical, especially on sites like this, that should be right up front. Because it's either yes or no. Either the soil will be able to take it or be amended so it can take it, or it won't. And it's always buried later on down the line, and I think I think that should be changed. I really have a problem with Lot Two, with that middle lot. And I was thinking of what might be better for that little skinny space. And I think that, I mean, this is just an idea, but if you had two homes with two ADUs, the ADUs being smaller and being able to fit more easily into that very narrow space, maybe it would be a lot a lot. Maybe it would be easier to kind of stomach the way that you're really remaking the natural topography there. You're remaking that hillside. That isn't the way the hillside. You're mending it, you're carving it out, you're adding to it. It just, you're interfering with the landscaping and the drainage of that hillside. Living on a hillside myself, drainage is one of the most huge issues you can possibly face, not only for that property, but for the properties around it, how the drainage is impacting in there. I really that pole in the middle of Lot Two, the whole of Lot Two, I don't think at this point I would be able to say, let's approve something on Lot Two. The design of the homes, I think, is kind of ordinary. And I understand that you're trying to fit into a development, but I think the opportunity there is to develop something a little, I don't know, more dynamic for the neighborhood. And so just those multitude of peak roofs and it just doesn't kind of say this is something new and different and unique, but still fitting into that environment. That's a start.
Okay, we can always come back to you.
Okay, thanks.
If you have more to say. Jim?
Difficult lot to build on. You know, with the unique characteristics of having a steep lot like this, definitely looking at building a narrow multi-story project to get some sort of square footage in there, whether it could be a little more narrow and a little bit longer to not excavate so much is is an option. Maybe taking in consideration amassing of some of the existing fabric and applying that, you know, those volumes to these houses, even though if they're longer, they might be able to be broken up and amassing that that's more appropriate for the neighborhood, might help out a little bit in in working with the neighbors. I do like the fact that there are few corridors between the lots to give a little bit of light and air and open space to some of the development. Definitely like to see some more architectural articulation with some of the volumes and some of the materials wrapping around the neighbors to the sides. And even, this is going to be pretty large thing to look up at. There are some homes that I believe that that look up at this, that were in front of our isn't that the ranch that that's below, that's way further.
Yes, yes.
Way further. Can anybody see the back of these buildings? Not just all open space?
Well, Vadera Del Prisidio from a distance.
From a distance, yeah. Well, I mean, I think there's an opportunity to break up the levels with with different materials to break it up a little bit with the volumes. Definitely from the street. I'm encouraged that it's one story from the street, and it's not, I think a lot of the other homes are building up. And I did do, when there's a lot of distance between Planning Commission meetings, I went ahead and did a study of the FAR in the neighborhood. So I took a cross section of the entire neighborhood. You know, and what we did, what I did find is, you know, just just around the neighbor, just the adjacent neighbors, because I knew that this is the most impacted group of houses and found it, you know, the lots kind of average eighty-four hundred square feet, which the proposed lots are around nine thousand, so it's not out of the ballpark. Some of these houses have not been remodeled. Some of them have, and they kind of average about a floor area ratio of twenty-six, and I think that these are roughly thirty-one, kind of in the same ballpark as far as floor area ratio. And we are ten percent below the allowable, so it's, you know, in an area that's very modest. I think the biggest hurdle is really kind of trying to develop a house on a narrow lot that's narrow, but it's broken up to look like some of the existing fabric of the house. And as Mr. Bandell said, you know, how to make it interesting and new and fresh, it's up to the architect. But, you know, I'm just speaking to the data. I think the data, it speaks for itself. As far as the variance goes, I still think that there's opportunities to try to figure out how to work with the land on the side. It seems like you're not even close to encroaching on the setback on one side. I don't know if there's an opportunity just to push the whole entryway into its own space and then separating them a little bit, but I don't want to get into designing the house. I just want to talk about how it's going to fit into the neighborhood a little bit better. So perhaps maybe exploring some different solutions on that middle lot would be encouraging to us. And then I really feel like once you guys get your proposal together. Be encouraging to us. And then, I really feel like once you guys get your proposal together, really talk to the neighbors, it, it seems like this group of neighbors have been around a while, and they'll have a lot to say, and they've enjoyed this, this open space. I don't know if there's a way to encourage some sort of solution where the neighbors could enjoy some of the views out to the back. I, I don't know. There's no, there's no, there's nothing that we could force you to do, but maybe some of the neighbors have some ideas on how they would work with you guys on a solution that that feels good for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Uh, Dr. Bundy?
Uh, yeah, I think these are all good points they're going over. I was gonna ask Adam to pass around that, that, that study of other houses, yeah, that, that, that his development team has worked on in the past. So I, I need to get a better understanding of what Peter was saying as far as the actual setbacks from the street uh, on the north side of the street as compared to this, you know, new property on the south side of the street. And were you pla, the other question I had was, was there, Phil, I guess, sidewalk that would be proposed or required as, as part of this? Cause I think the, the homes on each side then have sidewalks that go to them, I believe.
Yeah, there, there isn't, there is an existing sidewalk there today. I'm looking at a photo right now. And I can, I can bring it up. So yeah, yeah, there is, oh, there's, okay, there is an existing sidewalk. I just wanted to bring one of those photos up, Tracy. So sidewalk exists.
Okay, excuse me.
Uh, kind of, kind of odd that it does, given.
The, I guess I would like to go back to the, the issue of the power pole and the undergrounding. And I wasn't suggesting that, you know, Adam, take responsibility for undergrounding the neighbors' lines or anything, but if you did maybe the bigger part of undergrounding between the two existing poles on the, uh, north side of the street, and the neighbors would contribute, you know, their, you know, the portion that they need to get it undergrounded to their house, that would be an enhancement for their houses, and it would, you know, also be an enhancement for the houses that you're proposing to build. So I, I guess I would encourage to, to try to look at that and see if that wouldn't be a possibility to be able to pencil in somehow. So those, those are my concerns and I, I would like to, to see that lot too, you know, worked on as, as much as possible.
Thank you, Bob. Alright, Dan, over to you.
Yeah, I just would repeat what, what you heard about the, the buildings, the three buildings all looking so similar. It's though they were done by a spec developer. It just changes a little something here or there in the materials, and none of the houses in the neighborhood look like that. They're all quite different. So I would encourage you to look at, uh, the materials, uh, windows, things that will help each house be a little bit more unique. I also think it would be good to really look at that lot two floor plan, building floor plan. It looks like if you, as people have suggested, if you make it longer and move the stairs and the bedroom between the garage and the house, uh, the house will get longer. But you might not need the variance, because that's what's partly pushing for that variance. And then, also since the house is further down the grade, making it longer, it's not gonna have as much impact on the view from the houses across the street. That's it.
Okay, alright, thank you. In looking at this development, I, I agree with the commentary that the three houses could stand to be a little more differentiated. But with materials that are of quality that wrap around the structures. Stucco as a finish is okay, but to sort of give it that false front of nicer materials on the street side is disingenuous, I think, to go around the building. Uh, it, I can't tell, and it probably doesn't matter at this point what the roof materials might be. But I think that this is, yeah, it's probably comp that you've got on there. Okay, right. Okay, so I don't have as much of a difficulty with lot two as the other commissioners. Uh, I think that we have approved other encroachments in the neighborhood that are quite close to the street, and that I think this one would appear to be no closer than some of the other homes that are on the street. Um, and thusly, it's, uh, it's, it's more, it's within the typical of the street, I think. Given that right away, that is probably twelve feet in from the curb at least. I very much liked the fact that these appear to be one-story. All of the homes in the neighborhood are two-story facing, so you are not having a two-story impact on the view. So I think that's something you should, you need to continue to pursue. So how you achieve the difference of articulation in the developments up and down the street, they changed the gable fronts, they did all kinds of things to those homes. And if you're just driving down the street, you think all these homes are different, but to, to the previous commenter's story, they're all the same footprint, but they look different. Um, but they are of that era. So it's up to you whether you try to match that era, uh, or what you should, I think you should differentiate these homes. Um, I think it's the, and property owner's right to develop these homes, and I, I, I wholeheartedly support that. I think that you could be able to do this. I understand the need for a SEQA. It seems a little over board, but the application of the code is what has to be done. So there you have it. I don't have anything else to say. Um, we could try to summarize here what we've heard, but you've been furiously taking notes, and you've gotten some, I think, really clear feedback from the other commissioners.
Bill, are you, are you gonna summarize this? Like planners in other towns too.
We have video.
Notes and send them to you, right.
So, so, so that's a no?
That's a, that's a, that's a no. We, we can certainly, you know, yeah, we have the video. Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And we can certainly, we can certainly check tomorrow or, or other, other days and compare notes.
Okay, then I'll take you up on your offer of a summer.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from four commissioners is that lot two is problematic for them, right? And that they would see a reassessment of your layout on the lot as advantageous to the application. How you achieve that is entirely within your realm. Stretch it out, do something to, uh, reduce that reliance on a fourteen-foot setback and get that house out there, along inside the buildable portion of that lot. It's, it is narrow, I grant you that. It's very small, but that's the nature of that lot. You're sort of held hostage by that. I think that everybody here would like to see a more interesting design, more developed architecture for the, the three homes, and that the palette of materials be expanded, um, to create some interest and to be more uniform around the structures. Um, I also hear that the neighborhood outreach could ratchet up a little bit, and you guys could place a business card and so forth, a way to get contacted by the neighbors so that they feel they've been heard. And we find that that's probably the biggest single thing is that the neighbors feel they've been heard, and that you respond to them and let them know you heard them. And it's up to you how you respond with what they say or whatever, but they like to hear something back. So that's really important. It doesn't go into the void. In short, I think that everybody here feels like you've got a project. So, you know. Yeah. Um, I think that we're all on the boat, that if you could figure out a scheme, get a neighborhood partition going to PG&E for undergrounding the power poles out there.
Just that one power pole.
It's feeding half the neighborhood. So, you know, that alone ruins the view. You could create a neighborhood momentum, just yourselves, getting rid of power poles, and that would be something to gather everybody around them. But, uh, you know, there's I'm, now I'm commenting personally on this a little bit. It's a sleepy part of town over there. And I think that people are used to seeing this neighborhood quiet and sleepy over there. This has changed, and that's upsetting. So, that's something that's common.
Peter, one thing?
Yes.
Can I add?
Yeah.
I, I, the one thing that was missing here was any, um, plan of landscaping around. And if this, if you're taking down as many trees as I think was recommended for building, um, a landscape plan around the homes would be very critical. At least from my point of view.
Agreed, yeah.
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
Would that be during the, the, the actual design?
As part of it.
And, and that's typical.
If you came back for another study session after you've revamped things and moved your project along a little bit, I would come back with a bit of a landscape plan for the properties, yeah. Something.
We'll hide it.
You've seen those cell towers that look like pine trees?
But for instance, there are no street trees along that frontage. And every other home.
Those are view blockers. All the trees have gone up.
Right, but all the other homes on the street have trees. Just a point. That, that they have trees on all the other homes on the street. And if you, if you made your street trees in there, you'd be blocking views. That's just ammunition to use however you see fit, right. Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Very, very helpful.
Right, good. Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Go forth. Okay, so been so long since we've had a meeting. You know, it's time for commissioner reports.
You know what Commissioner Rizzo has been doing? He's been doing FAR studies.
Sorry, I was actually looking to develop that lot a few years ago, so I know a little bit about it, but I didn't do the FAR study. I was just curious, because some of the lots on Marin map were huge. You know, if you look at the, the lot line.
I have a question now that we're back in person. Do we get our binders back? With our printouts?
I don't think those made it over from the old town hall. I'm just joking. We have them. Tracy, yes, we, we have them. We have them.
And all of you or any of you that want hard copies of anything, just let us know.
Okay. Yeah, that would be great. Just that, especially with, with Dan, just doing this, yeah, you know, do you want, do you want hard copies of everything? Do, when, when you, if you do want hard copies, you want full size or half size? And it, it can certainly vary from project to project, but it'd be great to um, hear from all of you if, you know, things have changed some, like, you know, whether you want all electronic or all paper, half and half.
Would be the recipient.
Uh, you can send it to me. Yes. And I'll send it to Tracy, you know. And, and Martha. Yep, send it to me.
And if you do want binders, because we're here and pass some relevant sort of printouts, whether that's the rules and procedures or other sort of ground act information, you know, any of those things that sometimes can come in handy at the DIES, let us know. We can get those binders for you as well to have that present for you. Okay.
Binder.
Binder.
Binder. Two binders.
I have to print it as the.
Well, it's just that you can have it here for.
I have my binder.
Here's what it looks like.
And then.
Print, printouts of staff reports.
Or your rules and procedures. Oh, there you go.
Uh-huh, look at that. He's got us already.
I want it to be branded. According to their branding.
Yeah. So in the realm of commissioner reports, last town council meeting was July nineteenth, as I before. Right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I attended that meeting. And I will simply say that the presentations the NRG presentation by Rachel Kurtz was scintillating. Um, and
It was.
Quite extensive what she does for all the neighborhood response groups. It was quite informative. But then we got down to, to business items down there, and, um, sales tax committee, um, said sales taxes are all fine and good. And then there was this thing about this guy, Adam Wolf, as interim town manager.
Snuck up on, on, yeah, all of us a little bit, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and you get to tell us all about that, you know, because you are here. Um, and then there was this, uh, proposal to hire a climate and adaptation coordinator for the planning and building department. And the Marin IJ had a cartoon about that the other day. Saw it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a very, I was, yeah, it's one of those cartoons. I think I said to Rebecca, it's only Marin can you get a, a cartoonist, uh, uh, what was it? No, it was a condescending cartoon in that it felt sometimes his, his cartoons make you feel like you just don't understand any, what he's trying, what the point is, but that's, it's a good cartoonist in some way.
So this is a, um, item that is going to be heard again, is that correct, by the council?
Yeah, next week, second, two readings of the position.
So it sounds like it's a, uh, it's a movement to occur. It's going to happen.
Yes, and we're gonna be advertised. Hope, we've been trying, it's just our, we've been advertising for a lot of positions, otherwise it would already be out, but we're, we're working towards advertising that position and, and soon to have a, a new employee join us. Well, relatively soon. Uh, but just a one clarification, it's going to actually be reporting to the, um, town manager.
Right.
Right, so, but we'll see. I mean, that's initially, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do a couple of
Yeah.
Reports myself. I know we're at nine thirty-two, but is that? reports myself. I know we're at nine thirty-two, but is that? Okay. Oh, you mean at the?
Quarter and shorter, just like Todd.
Oh. My presentations or no?
No, you're.
Oh, my hair. Sorry, I didn't know. Yeah, I'm going, no, I, I guess it's, I just, um, I don't know. No comment. Just happened. I'll grow it back. Don't worry. I'll grow it back. Uh, yeah, so uh, obviously there's been some changes. Um, and uh, so yeah, on council, I've been appointed to the interim town um, manager position and that, that contract um, is through December of this year. Um, and we'll likely be, we are discussing potential future options later in the fall. Um, the goal of, is that it hopefully turns into a permanent position, but we're just not there yet and we're taking this as an appropriate next step. Um, with that, obviously, there's been a lot of um, implications for our team that you're seeing around us. And, and so I just want to um, thank our team here for some of their uh, adjustments. Their responsibilities and roles. One of those is going to be um, in particular Martha. Well, you'll be seeing more of Martha at the planning commission meetings and sort of sitting in this position. Um, I will be attending certain meetings in the future, but I am going to need to devote some other time. Um, obviously to town council responsibilities and other commissions and committees that I'm also going to be um, monitoring and seeing what's going on in those, in those worlds. Um, I'm certainly, uh, one of the things that is a council priority is obviously our housing element, so we'll be in close contact through that process, working closely with Martha as I have been. And so you'll see me at any planning commission invol, meeting involving the housing element. And I would say other policy matters, um, such as some that we've had in the past related to housing. We're going to be talking about design review coming up and changes there that Phil and Tracy are working on. So I'm, you know, I will not say uh, goodbye at all to this commission. I don't want to, I, you know, and I, I, I just not ready for that uh, conversation with all of you. So um, in any case, that is a, a big shift. Um, we're working. I think that's, I wanted to make sure you understood that and the sort of the how where our team is, is, is changing. We're not um, currently changing anybody's titles in the, in the planning and building department. Just so um, I'm still resource and this is still my passion um, in a lot of ways for planning. So I take that with me to the town manager role, which is in the, in a way exciting, I think, for our, our, our plans that we're working on and some of the thing, other things that is going, uh, you know, is, is happening in town and, and, and development projects that will be coming before um, the town um, in the future. And other projects such as adaptation projects and so on. So that's probably the most significant report. Um, there are some other reports though. I mean, I would should say with respect to the housing element, there's been a lot going on. Um, we haven't had a meeting in a while, but the housing element, I think, as you are well aware, was out for a thirty-day public review period. It went out from July to August eighth. Um, so that just closed. We've gotten, I think, about twenty, yeah. Yeah, I think about twenty-two, twenty comments, letters. We're going to be discussing that at the next council meeting. Um, the timelines are pretty quick. Really, the next step in the process is to get this draft housing element to the state for their ninety-day review period. And um, over that time, sort of, it's not going to be simultaneous, but probably, probably by the end of the month, we're going to be really, releasing our supplemental uh, environmental impact report that will go out. We're going to be working on uh, the actual nitty-gritty of the zoning proposals for all of the sites. As you know, they, we're going to have to change the residential densities on a lot of these properties. And along with that, development standards as well, we're going to be looking at those. So still yet to be determined how exactly, exactly that, that plays out, but I know that's going to be of um, real significant interest to this commission. So we're going to, just talking about trying to get that to the commission in advance of sort of the, even, you know, in advance of other, of actual draft housing element coming back from HCD. So there's a little bit, some discussion and time to think about it, but it's a condensed window we have over the fall. And so we're um, happy that six forty-five Tama Pius is not going to be around for another, another uh, review and, and so on. But anyways, there's um, uh, the other thing that's been out and about is the short-term rental survey. Um, we had a window where we put a survey out initially, but we, we, it was sort of a not widely disseminated and, and so we took a new round at the survey and really sent a mailer out to every residential property in town. Um, and did a lot more outreach and have gotten a lot better response to this point. So that will also be something that um, working with our uh, consultant Bob Brown on, uh, will be back for a workshop with the commission um, relatively soon where we can discuss the results of the survey and start to grapple with very um, challenging topics related to short-term rentals. Um, and so that's something that's been out. If you haven't taken, or you know, again, that's still an active survey at this point. Those, I think, are um, say the main items that I wanted to go over at this point. Is there anything else? Oh, of course, yeah. Well, that's that's taken on a, another project that is going to have, we're going to be discussing at the next council meeting, but is, isn't directly related to the planning commission. Um, but certainly is related to planning in the town as a whole. Um, but the TAM will pious over crossing project, uh, that Caltrans has has released a draft initial study, their environmental document and released several alternatives. Um, and so their, their comment period is um, over on August twenty-second. So they're going to be making, they've made one presentation to the community. Uh, there's a BPAC meeting last night. There'll be a presentation at the council meeting where a just, a, and also a discussion of a, a comment letter or resolution um, for uh, Caltrans to consider the preferred alternative there. Um, that will come out of that meeting. So um, anyways, that's a significant and hugely important project. Um,
They're going to make a presentation at that meeting?
They're going to make, yeah, my, they, my understanding, they're also going to make another presentation at that meeting.
That's August what?
Yes, sixteenth.
Okay.
Um, so a lot going on and uh, just.
Well, you inaugurated the, the moving of the dirt.
Oh, that's right. And then, of course, Friday, somehow, and, and uh, Vice Chair Rizzo was able to sneak into the photo there with the golden shovel.
But he was going to, we had coffee and I was going to go up there in my sweats. My, I put on my shirt on and sure enough, I got pulled into the photo. I could have been in my sweat.
I think, I think Mayor Kasey did want to, I think, acknowledge the planning commission's work um, in that regard. And so it's nice to have a planning commissioner, at least there, to represent um, the contributions of uh, the commission and in that process, which was, as we know, was many years long. And so it was actually a really nice moment to celebrate that accomplishment of getting to that point. And uh, you know, if you haven't obviously seen it, you should go by, but it's really remarkable to um, that fairly soon, we're going to start to see some structure actually rising there at that location. And it's pretty exciting. So um,
It went down in one day.
Yeah.
I literally saw it in the morning, had a cup of coffee, walked to my house, heard some banging and it was a pile of rubble. Yeah, seriously, it was like eight hours. Once they got all the
Yeah.
the stuff mitigated out of there.
They moved it from Thursday to Friday and I couldn't make it.
Uh.
Yeah, anyway, I wanted to, but.
Okay. Um, there'll be, you, you'll definitely, when we get to that ribbon cutting, that's the big one. I mean, at least for staff as well. I said, yeah, look, it's a little premature to celebrate too much. We got to get, deliver this thing, right? You know, on time and under budget. That's Todd's.
Dr. Bundy asked about uh, moving the meetings back to seven, six.
Yeah. So I think we should, if all in favor, what we can do is um, you know, it's a little cumbersome of a process, but I think it's important to follow this process. So if everyone here is in favor of actually considering a change to our planning commission rules and procedures that would actually change potentially change the time. I mean, we put it on the agenda um, as a business item. Uh, what Commissioner Bundy had uh, expressed was potentially a half hour earlier uh, to six thirty. So it's, again, it's, it's nothing, we're not deciding anything now. It's just whether to put it on the agenda for a discussion item at the next meeting. Uh, but.
Yeah, I was just going to say that uh, as I recall, Todd you know, really wanted to move all of the commission meetings to six thirty. And uh, Phyllis, because of her work schedule, wasn't able to do that. But uh, uh, my understanding is all the other commission meetings are at six thirty. So and this, this would seem to work out well for staff in particular. So, you know, you don't have to, you know, go home necessarily and then come back if you're a ways away, that it would shorten that down. And six thirty uh, seems to work for all the other commissions and town councils. So I, I would advocate, we go for that.
Well, why don't we, I think the first, first first step is just to decide whether or not we want to put this on the agenda. And I mean.
I would caution against discussing merits of it tonight.
Talk about that. Yeah.
Brown Act, it's not on the agenda. Can't make a decision tonight.
Right.
I, I think we ought to acknowledge that. Yes, we appreciate him stepping into a spot that would have been in.
Yeah.
Very much.
Well, thank you. I, I have enjoyed being on the uh, commission and really wanted to give somebody else a chance to come on the commission. And then uh, with uh, Phyllis and some time with the thought it would be best to have continued.
Yeah, no, I have. Um, so with the commission, majority of the commission uh, agreeing to put this on as a, I mean, it can be a short business item at the next meeting, but we can discuss what merits of, of moving the time then. Is that, okay, so we'll put that on the next agenda. Um, okay, that's all, that's all I got.
What you got? Okay. Well, we have two sets of minutes to uh, review. Um, has everybody looked at those? Um, or God help us, April twenty-sixth and June fourteenth. Um, move to approve? Or commentary?
All in favor of approving the minute?
Aye.
Mic, mics on, but yes, they'll, everyone said aye.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't at those meetings.
Very good. Appreciate that. Okay.
Okay, with that said, let's adjourn this. Good night.